And we forge our future with the same flame as our steel. Oh, there's a place in the Midwest that's calling you home. The best part of Portage is what's next. The best part of Portage is you. There's more for you in Indiana. There's a place in the Midwest, fifty miles southeast of Chicago nestled near the coast of Lake Michigan. It's a place driven by what's coming next, a place where industry is the lifeblood of its community and its pulse is gridded with sand and steel, fire and smoke. It's a city building its future together, one business, one family, and one home at a time. This is a place for makers, doers, and dreamers. It's where the global marketplace meets hometown values, where Americana isn't just a tradition, it's a way of life. Here, your experience makes the difference. With access to railroads, major waterways, and eight different highways, goods, services, and ideas not just across the state but across the world. And when the work ends the day's just beginning, with beaches like West Beach in the Indiana Dunes National Park, exciting hiking and biking trails like the Diana of the Dunes Dare or the BMX Track, and local treasures and exciting festivals, you'll know you're in more than just a bedroom community. From veterans of foreign wars to hometown heroes, our diversity is our strength. And we forge our future with the same flame as our steel. Oh, there's a place in the Midwest that's calling you home. The best part of Portage is what's next. The best part of Portage is you. There's more for you in Indiana. There's a place in the Midwest, fifty miles southeast of Chicago nestled near the coast of Lake Michigan. It's a place driven by what's coming next, a place where industry is the lifeblood of its community and its pulse is gridded with sand and steel, fire and smoke. It's a city building its future together, one business, one family, and one home at a time. This is a place for makers, doers, and dreamers. It's where the global marketplace meets hometown values, where Americana isn't just a tradition, it's a way of life. Here, your experience makes the difference. With access to railroads, major waterways, and eight different highways, this is a place in motion, sending goods, services, and ideas not just across the state but across the world.
I'll call to order the City of Portage Planning Commission for Monday, April 7th, if you would stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cherry, could you call roll?
Victor Mendoza, Melissa Weidenbach, Brent Wright.
Here.
Carissa Childers.
Here.
Sam La Boy.
Here.
Deb Ekdahl.
Here.
Denise Little.
Here.
Victoria Vasquez.
If everybody's had an opportunity to look at the minutes, if there are no additions or correction, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
I'm amending my, uh, roll call. John Krempe.
Yeah.
Are there any reports from staff? Could you call our first order of new business?
Uh, P dash zero two dash two five, Cap Properties LLC. Staff is asking to table this until next month. Dina, what's our next month date?
Table till date certain of May 5th of next, of twenty-five.
May I have a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cherry, could you call roll?
Brent Wright.
Yes.
Carissa Childers.
Yes.
Sam La Boy.
Yes.
Deb Ekdahl.
Yes.
Denise Little.
Yes.
John Krempe. Second under new business, public hearing is Z dash zero two dash two five, Simon CRE C H S, or C S H four LLC, care of Tyler Beek, six nine zero zero East Second Street, Scottsdale, Arizona, requesting a change of zoning from R one, very low residential, to C two, medium large scale commercial, and M two multifamily residential on the south and east corner of Airport Road and US Highway six. Parcel ID number six four dash zero six dash three zero dash one zero zero dash zero two four dash zero 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 dash zero one six, consisting of eighty-four point two nine nine acres.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Are you representing Simon?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So I'm Mohammed, I'm representing Simon CRE for the case number, uh, Z oh two twenty-five.
Could you speak into, it's just a little difficult to hear you.
All right. So I'm Mohammed, uh, representing Simon CRE for case number Z oh two twenty-five. And, uh, our request is to, uh, rezone the parcel to M two and C two as it's existing for R one zone. Yeah, I do have my Mac, but, uh, I was unable to pull it up on the screen. So I shared it with Dina and, uh, Tom Cherry.
kind of looking at putting in there?
Uh, sure. Do you want, I mean, I have my team member Tyler, he can explain it very well. Do you want me to put him on call?
No, I think, I think we're okay.
Okay. Uh, so basically we'll be having our stores, uh, down, I mean, on the bottom of the site. Uh, let me just have him on call. Hey Tyler.
Okay, Brent's gonna help us so that when you're talking, he can point to the different areas, 'cause it's a little bit hard to see, uh, from the audience, I think.
Okay. Yes. Uh, one chicken. What's that Tyler? Sorry.
Yeah. Hello. I'm happy to kind of explain to you what's going on. You can put me on the microphone here.
Can, uh, can he?
Just put the phone in the microphone.
Okay. Go ahead Tyler.
Yeah, so what we're looking to do here, can everybody hear me? We're not set up, ordered from an audio visual or technology standpoint to have it. Telephone calls come in, we have a record to protect, a record that needs to be sent to the city council. So whoever's, whoever's gonna speak on this matter needs to be present through the matter. So that, if, if we're ready tonight, we can continue. If we need another month, we can do that as well.
Okay, I'll just explain it, sorry sir. I'll just go ahead and explain it. So we'll be having our majors underneath the store, yeah, right over there. And, uh, in this forty acres of parcel, we want that to be C two commercial and, uh, the rest forty acres would be for, uh, M two, uh, high density residential.
And that's down here.
Yeah, that's down there. Yeah, that's the future plan. And according to, uh, like, Portage Comprehensive Plan, this property, this parcel has already been classified as a commercial district. So I think that should be good, uh, point for us to have, uh, for considering zone change. And the bottom portion was already, uh, like, planned to be a commercial district and we have, uh, upgraded it to M two zone from R one. So even that would be a good point for us to consider while we make this zone change.
Audience, um, do you want to talk about the smaller stores that you've got coming in and then what kind of buildings and businesses are you gonna be putting on Route Six?
Uh, sure. So we have some of the, uh, quick restaurants on the top corner. You can see over there, yeah, sir, he's pointing it correctly. Uh, so, uh, we are in prospect of getting more tenants in there, those parcels. As of now, uh, we are still in like, uh, preliminary stage of our project. So it should be, uh, more of quick restaurants and some retail shops and major anchors like, uh, good retail stores, yeah.
And then do you also want to talk about your plans for the residential to the south?
Uh, we don't have any plans as of now. We just want to keep that, uh, changed to M two zone, uh, and then look for better, like, opportunity, what to do next.
Okay.
So just to clarify from, from this end, uh, 'cause I, obviously we've all been involved in this. So the anchor is, um, obviously right here where my cursor is, it's hard to, yeah, that's gonna be the anchor. There's gonna be some stores, um, uh, that's part of this, this, um, building, but individual stores all the way to the east. And then we have some outlots here that is, that are gonna be, whether they're restaurants or commercial.
Yes, sir.
Out here. We're taking, the road is gonna continue from Coles on the other side of the street here and it's gonna continue and intersect and cut through the subdivision, uh, this commercial subdivision. This with our comprehensive plan was the plan for this road to go through. Uh, down here in between, uh, to the south of this, there's a parcel of land in between Farmington, the Providence, um, development and the C two that we're, we're gonna, the plan is to phase, um, residential from, very similar to what is behind Menards and kind of phase it all the way to the Providence, um, development down on the south, all the way down to seven hundred. So we're kind of phasing it, um, as the comprehensive plan said. So this is the, just to let you know, that's the anchor right there and then all the outlots are right here. This is Route Six. It's kind of hard to see with the small printout, but just to kind of let everybody know, this is Airport on the west. Okay.
And that completes your presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? And what we will do is, uh, we won't answer questions while somebody's speaking. We make a list of all the questions and then we make sure that all those questions are answered for you.
Is this the second petition? It's listed as sec- second, third, fourth here?
Yes.
Okay.
Z oh two twenty-five.
Thank you. So, I think to put it simply as I can, I think that this is something that I know that we're very proud of as a city. I was on this plan commission before you guys were and I remember some time ago there was proposal to basically go all residential with this property. I think that there was a lot of good pushback from the city because we believed in the commercial potential for this property. And I think what we have here is a great vision for a, you know, commercial, you know, vision for this property. I also think that it's very prudent to consider the fact that because there is a big, mostly single-family zoned area to the south, you would have some buffer or transition zoning, you might say, between a commercial district as large as this and then the large, you know, more, uh, single-family district to the south. So, again, I know that eventually this will come to the city council and whatever you guys ultimately recommend, I know that I'll be, you know, encouraging the city council to see the strong benefit of having a big commercial district up on the north end, transitional zoning, and then the, um, land that they recently zoned last year for the more single-family, bigger neighborhood. I think it's well layered. Thank you.
Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? If not, I close the public hearing and open to questions from the commission. Just one point of history. When Coles went in, I think about two thousand and five, this parcel would have been developed by the same developers and very similar to what they are, um, offering us now. So, um, it wasn't our master plan at that point.
And just to, um, let you know, this is a, either a favorable or unfavorable recommendation, that's what we're motioning on.
To the, to the city council.
To the city council, correct.
Questions?
I have a question. Um, I see Target is, you call Target the anchor. I wanted to say Target because it's small print, but I believe that Target, it's a good plus, it's a plus for the City of Portage. Um, are there any other, other than the word anchor, addressed to any of the other businesses or something that, uh, that designates that you have a stronghold on certain, uh, businesses that will be coming in to fill in these anchors, these additional spots?
Uh, as of now, we don't have any tenants for those spots, but, uh, we'll just get them and keep the City of Portage informed about any progress that we make.
Any other questions? If there's no questions, may I have a motion?
Um, I'd like a motion to approve as recommended for Z zero two dash two five, that we approve Or recommend the city council to approve it as, as it's being presented.
So the motion would be, uh, you would, uh, you're making a motion for a favorable recommendation to city council?
Yeah, that's better.
I'll second that.
Okay, do we have to clarify that? 'Cause we also are doing an M two in there.
Yeah, Brent, would you like to re?
Yeah, sorry. Um, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, give a favorable, propose a favorable recommendation to the city council for the zoning request change, uh, from R one to C two and M two multifamily as being presented.
I'll second that.
And we have a second.
Brent Wright.
Yes.
Carissa Childers.
Yes.
Sam La Boy.
Yes.
Deb Ekdahl.
Yes.
Denise Little.
Yes.
John Krempe.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Next, uh, on new business, P dash zero one dash two five, Drive and Shine Car Wash, care of Greg Lorg with DVG Team Incorporated, eleven fifty-five Trot Wine Road, Crown Point, Indiana, seeking primary plat for two lots in DEV H twenty-four subdivision at fifty-eight seventy, US Highway six.
Good evening.
Good evening, Plan Commission. I see some, uh, familiar faces up here, so good to see everyone again. I'm gonna try to get plugged in here and hope, uh, things go well. Um, I'll get started while we, while we lead for this. Um, basically, we're here for a primary plat petition for... Oh. Should I unplug it, replug it maybe?
Let's just do this. You can go ahead and unplug it.
Unplug it?
Yeah.
Back in. Sorry about that. Appreciate everyone's patience. So again, yes, my name is Greg Lorg with DVG Team. We are the applicant for this primary plat, um, representing the developer, Drive and Shine Inc. Both myself and Drive and Shine members have been to several public meetings, uh, over the recent months here. Unfortunately, Drive and, uh, Drive and Shine was not able to attend tonight, so you guys are just stuck with me, um, but happy to answer any questions as we get through this. Um, as I mentioned last year, uh, we were before city council to vacate a roadway easement in the rear of this property. Uh, we also, um, were able to get a sanitary easement, uh, reduction in the rear of the property that, um, would, would make the development more feasible. Um, we submitted our primary plat the end of January and since then we have been working diligently with, uh, Dina, Lilly, Tom, and Great Lakes Engineering to address any comments they have. Um, we actually kind of revamped this, you know, quite a bit a couple times that I think is gonna work out for, for all parties. So, um, I'll call your attention to the screen. I think this is a good graphic, basically explaining what the plat does. Um, so there's six, this project is located at the, uh, intersection of Ash Street and US Highway six, um, just north of the existing signal there. Um, the box that is shown in yellow, um, would be the, um, property that would be subdivided to the east, uh, for Drive and Shine. So we're basically, all these red lines are existing, we're taking six existing parcels and combining them into two now, um, which works good for our development, but also, um, cleans up some, some things with the property next door. Um, so basically, we're taking six parcels, combining into two, and then we will have a ingress egress easement between the properties with a reciprocal access agreement. Um, so what you see on the plat is, is pretty much what you just saw on my screen. There were a lot of, a lot of tiny lots and now we're making them into two bigger lots. Um, as I mentioned, Lot One would be for the commercial, um, and Lot Two would be staying with the sellers. Um, I do want to, I guess I'll ask the question to Dina or Tom, should, should I get into the site plan as it relates to the plat? Just for visual at least?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Because we're gonna continue on to the other portions of the, uh, agenda.
So mainly, um, this north is to the left in this graphic, but this is a, a site plan. So the existing property, actually I'll just zoom in here. The dark line you see right here would be the divider between the east and west parcel. So all of Drive and Shine's improvements will be on their property to the east and then there will be a shared access drive between the two property owners, Drive and Shine and the neighbors next door. As I mentioned, as far as primary plat goes, um, we have, you know, worked with staff to address all comments to date and, um, asking for your approval tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions, um, about the plat or site plan.
Well, just for the audience, um, because we're in public hearing, can you talk about the Drive and Shine?
Yes.
What you have inside, outside?
Yep, so I'll, I'll get into that. I'm actually going to start with a video. So I'm just gonna pause this for a second too, but as I mentioned, uh, Drive and Shine is a very high-end premier car wash. I'm sure many of you guys are familiar with it, but, um, they, they do not spare any expense on how they develop their sites, so I'll go ahead and play this. But as you can see, they do concrete pavement, um, around the entire building. Um, they have a special, uh, snow melt pavement system, um, at the entrance and exit of the wash, so ice doesn't develop. Brick facade, you know, nice looking brick facade. And this project, um, I'm gonna pause one more time. So what we'd be looking at for our project is a standard car wash, a indoor vacuum, which is the glass section here that we'll see as we move around. Um, the one thing that would, would be different is we do not have a lube center proposed at this site. Um, but basically what you see for a car wash here and the, um, outdoor vacuum is what we have. Um, so similar to what I will show on the site plan again, there will be a kiosk in the rear for paying, so cars will come in and pay. Um, and then really the, the thing that I think makes it really sharp is this green glass, um, that we do for the, um, indoor vacuum. So that will be facing to the west on Route Six, so this is what you would see as you're driving up eastbound on Route Six. And, you know, in talking with the Drive and Shine staff, the indoor vacuum is always the number one most sought-after requested feature that they do. Um, they have some other locations where they haven't been able to fit them in or didn't do them for whatever reason and people are disappointed. So if, if they can find a property like this property that works, they love to do it and that's what brings customers and, and traffic in for them. So, um, I'll move to a couple more exhibits to give you guys another look here. So I'll just elaborate on the site plan a little bit. Circulating in, um, where my hand is here on the screen on the lower right, that is the Ash Street existing traffic signal. Um, we are in the process of securing an indot, uh, right-of-way permit for this project. This is set up to pretty much just drop right into where they have the traffic signal loops right now and, and not mess with any of that. So we will have the shared access road here and the, um, way into the car wash will be in the rear of this access road. We will have employee parking back here and, um, as we circle around, um, this is where the pavement kiosk will be as you go back southbound. This is where you would enter the car wash. Um, I know, working with staff, there was a, a little confusion, which was honestly my bad. Um, there's kind of a, um, breakaway lane here and this is just for like emergencies in case like a car breaks down in the car wash or they have any equipment. like a car breaks down in the car wash or they have an equipment failure. So they'll typically have cones out here, and that'll be blocked off, but they can open it up in case there's an emergency. So folks will drive through the car wash. As they come through the car wash, they kind of have two options, well, I guess three. Outdoor vacuums are free, and those will be located on the west side of the site, so they can take a left here, you know, vacuum out their car, and then come back around the site. There's basically two ways to get outside the site or out of the site. US 6 is a divided highway right in front of this business or this property, so this is going to be a right-in, or I'm sorry, a right-out exit-only driveway there. And then as we go around the site, if you want to go into the indoor vacuum, you will circle around here, and there is gate controls because indoor vacuum is for members only. So it's very controlled on how it works. But we've worked with Drive &amp; Shine pretty thoroughly to get this to fit their needs on this property. From a drainage and utility standpoint, we will have a detention pond in the rear. We will have storm sewers on the site that drain to the detention pond, and then the detention pond will actually outlet back to the US 6 storm sewer, which is a very large diameter, 42-inch, I think it is. From a water and sewer standpoint, we have access to Indian American Water right in the front of the site, good-sized main, so we're working with them to get their approval on the new service. And then we've been working with, you know, Dan Comenda on utilities with the sanitary sewer back here. The sewer lies in the rear, like I was talking about, in existing easement, and we will run our sanitary out to that existing sewer that's under the Fiesta right-of-way. Show a couple more things here. So honestly, I don't think these elevation views are quite as good and realistic as the drone video, but, you know, they do their best. So again, kind of larger masonry units at the bottom than a nice brown brick, lot of glass. Again, we actually came to BZI, got a variance approved for the glass facade, and our building's Architecturally, there's not much more than what you actually already saw on the site plan as far as, you know, car wash on one side, indoor vacuum on the other. They do have a couple employee bathrooms and offices, but nothing major. And then, as you would imagine, they actually have a lot of mechanical equipment as well. They do have a water reclamation pit at this, so water that is running off gets recirculated and reused in the car washes and gets filtered, so they're not just dumping everything out straight to the sewer. I think the last thing I'll kind of go over is the landscape plan. I know, Dina, I think I saw an email come in from you today. There was one outstanding comment about the tree types that we're working through with the city, but one thing in our DRC meeting that was, you know, very clear is we really, and the owner was the same way from the get-go, in the back here, we do not want to disturb any more trees than we have to because it's wooded. So they're going to only take out what they absolutely have to for the pond and maximize keeping as many trees as possible. There is additional plantings proposed on the east side for a buffer next to the residential, but pretty standard planting types on here that we've worked with, with planning department. I guess with that, I will take any questions. Hopefully, that is more helpful. Sorry, right?
Okay, thank you.
I didn't jump into it.
I will now open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? If not, I close the public hearing and open two questions from the commission.
Are we combining these other Drive &amp; Shine petitions? Are they all combined? He discussed a lot of things.
They're separate, but we're gonna handle them immediately after this, so that we don't have to skip around a lot, so. This was the public hearing portion, so the other two would follow.
Any questions?
I do have one question.
Sure.
Just about the type of car wash it is. Is it a brushless car wash system, or is it...
That is a question that caught me off-guard. Can I... It's all available on their website. If it's critical to you, I do honestly have Frank, the operations manager, on standby, but I saw what happened in the first, so I didn't want to mention that. So he is on standby even though he couldn't make it, so I can certainly get you that answer if it's critical.
Okay, I can check out their website. And then the second question I have as far as like the landscaping on the front on the one slide that you showed, Route 6 is a really busy intersection, if it's okay that I ask. Just, I think it was right there, those crabapple prayer fire, I'm not familiar with, are those big bushes or trees?
These are, there should be a table on here for the... Are you kind of bringing up because of site distance? Is that your concern?
Right, just because of safety, just...
Yeah, we are, I know we're outside the site distance triangle because our monument sign is actually, it's pretty big, and it's actually closer to the intersection than that is, but that's a good point.
The exit would actually be on, at a stoplight, right?
As shown, these are 18, up to 18 feet tall, but if the city would like, we could put something else in.
You answered my question, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, may I have a motion?
Before I make the motion, I didn't print that particular sheet. Were there any contingencies on this particular motion?
Yes, the contingencies would be for the petitioner to provide a final reciprocal access agreement, and that's a shared access driveway with the business to the west, and also indot approval would be the two contingencies.
I'll make a motion to approve with the stipulation of your statements.
As stated.
As stated.
Is there a second?
A second.
And I want to make sure everybody understands what the motion is. Mr. Cherry, could you call roll?
Bren Wright.
Yes.
Carissa Childers.
Yes.
Sam LaBoy.
Yes.
Deb Ekdahl. Denise Little.
Yes.
John Kremke. So for flow reasons, we're gonna go with the second and third portion of the petitioner's...
Public hearing.
Pardon?
This would be the public hearing. Yeah, one of our public hearings.
We're gonna reopen, we're gonna go back to the public hearings. S-03-25 and SP-02-25. These are not public hearings, but they are a continuation of the first petition.
Welcome back.
Thank you. So I think next up, 325 is for secondary plat, so appreciate the town working with us to try to expedite this process. So we asked if it was possible to possibly get on the same meeting with our secondary plat, and they granted us this request. So as I stated, we've been working diligently with staff, you know, making the changes requested, and also really working with Drive &amp; Shine and the seller through this process of, again, combining the six lots into two now. So as far as what you see of what's been latest and greatest submittal, the secondary plat looks exactly the same as the primary plat, it just says secondary plat. So we've kind of been trying to accelerate things on our end, so there, as far as everything explained, how the properties are getting combined, nothing is any different than what I already presented. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission? If there's no questions, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the secondary plat for Drive &amp; Shine.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cherry, could you call roll?
Bren Wright.
Yes.
Carissa Childers.
Yes.
Sam LaBoy.
Yes.
Deb Ekdahl. Denise Little.
Yes.
John Kremke.
Yes.
The next would be SP-02-25 for the site plan approval.
So for a site plan, honestly, I, again, kind of already gave you guys an overview, you know, of what the building will look like with the video, kind of an overview of the site plan itself. I know some of you folks have seen this before in other public meetings, so I'll just cut to the chase and ask if there are any questions regarding the site plan specifically beyond what I've already explained, and I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the commission?
You did make a statement about landscaping update. Was this landscaping update already reviewed with the staff to remove it from contingencies? We might place with this.
I'm sorry, you wanted to add that to the contingencies or...
No, you have in the contingencies, an updated landscaping plan to be reviewed by the staff. He hinted about having an email that he had landscaping emails that he addressed. Has that been corrected so as not to put it in a contingency?
Yes, that's what I addressed.
What about some of the other ones we have here with flipping the directions?
That was addressed as well.
And there was another one, reciprocal access agreement?
That was still standing. That means the... But that one wasn't the first.
Right, but it's on this one, it's in this one.
Not on this one.
Indot approval? That's still...
Yeah, we can make those, those two contingencies are still in play, the indot approval and the reciprocal access agreement. Yeah, I'm sorry, recording of the plat as well.
So I guess just elaborate real quick from my end. So the reciprocal access agreement, we've provided the city a draft, and the two parties are still working it out, the final details with attorneys and stuff, but they have a general agreement. So once we have that final version in hand, we will submit it to the city, and likewise with the indot permit, when we have that in hand, we'll submit it to the city. I don't expect any significant change requests to come out of the indot permit, but if something of significance comes up, we'll certainly let Tom and staff know, you know, if it's going to actually affect anything with our site plan, but I don't see that coming. I think worst-case, we're probably looking at re-timing the signal potentially, that'll be indot traffic call, because obviously, there's not a lot of traffic that, not a ton of traffic that goes northbound on that signal right now, and that will pick up a
If there's no questions, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve with the following contingencies. Petitioner to provide a final reciprocal access agreement, indot approval, and the Plan Commission overall primary and secondary plat and recording requirements of the secondary plat of DEV H24.
May I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cherry, could you call roll?
Bren Wright.
Yes.
Carissa Childers.
Yes.
Sam LaBoy.
Yes.
Deb Ekdahl.
Yes.
Denise Little.
Yes.
John Kremke.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Plan Commission. Apologize for my voice.
Next, order of new business, public hearing. Amended P-03-24, Luke Land LLC, care of Daniel Tersman, with Luke Land LLC 3592, North Hobart Road, Hobart, Indiana, seeking primary plat approval of Luke Store 247 subdivision, approximately 1.56 acres, plus or minus, consisting of one lot to construct a Luke Oil Gas Station on the lot at 6375 Central Avenue, including 6349 Central Avenue, the former Beef Mart Building.
Good evening.
Good evening. Whoops, sorry. My name is Dan Tersman. I'm here on behalf of the Luke Family of Brands and Luke Land LLC. We presented, I think it was in the December hearing, for a primary plat for, to combine the two parcels, 6375 and I believe the other 6354 Central Avenue, or I'm sorry, 6349 Central Avenue, combining those two parcels for a new Luke convenience store and gas station. That, the primary plat was approved, but then we subsequently had some conversations with some of the, one of the neighboring property owners, and came to an agreement to essentially provide some additional overflow parking that would be some shared parking with that parcel. And so in that process, we requested to amend that primary plat. So that's, I guess, this first order of business is essentially the amended primary plat, and what that did was create a, it's the same, you know, everything is the same, other than there's a new outlot here at the southwest corner of the parcel to accommodate that parking. So it's not, it's a non-buildable lot. It would just be essentially an outlot for that parking area. I can show you, you know, this kind of, this is the site plan here, so this would be our convenience store, approximately a 4,000-square-foot convenience store. This is Central Avenue along here and Hamstrom Road. So the entrances, this, approximately right in this area is currently the former Beef Mart Building. Mart Building. So, that building would be demolished. So, the entire site essentially gets razed, including all of that parking area that's there now would be removed. And then, the new store built, this would be fuel canopies in front, fuel positions, and then this is that overflow parking area at the south area. And this here is a detention pond, then, for the entire site. So, that is for the stormwater control and everything for that. So, essentially, the, again, with the primary plat, the... we just are doing... requesting approval of the amendment to the primary plat to add that additional outlot A to accommodate for that parking area.
And just to help everybody, how do you see the drive pattern going to the rear of the two other lots?
So, there is an adjacent, and it's unfortunately not shown on here, but there is a... there's a shopping center to the west here that there's currently... this is all just open paving area, so there's already currently cross-access between the lots. And so, we have a... we've formalized that agreement. And then, the idea with this would be, you know, as part of this primary, and secondary plat is to, as part of the recording of this agreement, that would also be a... that cross-access agreement, reciprocal easement agreement would then be recorded, and that recording document would be noted on the plat prior to it being recorded. And so, once, you know, if we given... if we are granted approval, then that would be part of that whole process. So, essentially, we would get all that recording information put onto the plat prior to the commission... to, you know, the board signing the plat. And then, that recorded plat would then essentially, you know, document it, you know, combine all those documents together. So, it's a little bit of a, you know, logistical thing, but obviously, we had to kind of do all those steps in sequence to get the recording done correctly. So, there is, I guess I could mention also, and this was addressed in the previous... in the previous primary plat, but there is an existing sanitary sewer easement that currently was... or that was running on the south end of the... of parcel one. We presented and were granted by the sanitary board to vacate that easement. And so, that also is part of this plat would be then. That vacation document is also noted on the plat, so that would be recorded then with the... in conjunction with the plat.
Okay, thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anyone here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anyone here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? And if you would come up to the podium? And you will find sheets up there? And the sheet number you're going to want is P0324.
P0324, I got it. Thank you. Good evening.
Name and address?
My name is Maria Figueroa. I live at 6345 Defiance Avenue, just behind the proposed Luke Oil Gas Station. I do have concerns about that. I do... I am in objection to building a Luke gas station. I feel that there's a lot of concerns, in my opinion, environmental concerns, being so budded up against the residential area right behind us. The location of the proposed gas station will increase traffic and idling of vehicles with possible fuel spills, leaks, and invasions from cars and pumps affecting and harming the adjacent environment, quality of residential homes, nearby residents, pets, and wildlife. I feel the health and safety risks. The gas station will pose a greater fire and explosion risk due to the flammable nature of fuel in a residential area. This creates an added danger to homes, schools, and parks nearby. The continuous exposure to gas vapors can have long-term health effects on residents, including respiratory issues, headaches, and other conditions. Impact on property values, the presence of a gas station could lower property values in the area. Potential home buyers may be deterred to purchase in a neighborhood with a gas station directly behind their homes, which can impact homeowners' investments. Traffic and noise pollution, gas stations attract significant traffic, which could increase congestion and pose safety hazards for pedestrians and cyclists. This is especially concerning in residential areas where people may be walking to parks or schools. Noise from the gas station, especially late at night, fueling and deliveries which disturb... that could disturb the peacefulness of the neighborhood. Community character would be my gas station, or the gas station may not align with the community's vision for its future. Residential neighborhoods are often designed to provide a quiet, safe environment for families, and a gas station could disrupt that atmosphere. I feel many residents might feel that the community's aesthetic and character would be negatively impacted by the construction of a commercial enterprise like a gas station directly behind residential homes. And I propose that the gas station be located in a commercial or industrial area where it could have less impact on residential life. This could still meet the needs of the community without compromising the integrity of the neighborhood. And the land is zoned for residential use or commercial use. This development would violate that local zoning laws and require a significant change to the zoning regulations, as per the reason of this amendment, which could set a dangerous precedent for future commercial development in residential areas. I ask that you please consider opposing the requested amendment proposed by Luke Land to construct a Luke Oil Gas Station on the parcels, commonly known as 6375 Central Avenue and 6349 Central Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? If not, I close the public hearing. And I'll let you address any of the concerns she had.
Absolutely. And I, you know, want to, first of all, just, you know, point out that the public hearing is for the plat. So, the use is an approved... has been approved. So, as far as the gas station use, that has already been an approved use. I'm sorry. But so is concerning... but I do understand and appreciate the concerns that were raised, so I certainly am happy to address those concerning environmental issues or concerns. This would be a new gas station site, which would, you know, that... all of the environmental safety standards, and that will be followed. It's brand-new tanks, brand-new equipment, brand-new containment systems. So, to... not to get too far into the weeds on this, but, you know, with modern gas and underground storage equipment, it's not the same as it was 20 years ago, even 10 years ago. The walls of the tanks are triple-lined fiberglass. They have an interstitial layer that's monitored so that if there were, for whatever reason, any kind of leaks, those leaks are contained so that they don't leach into the ground. I wanted to pull up, you know, the... this is the site plan here. So, again, this is Central Avenue and Hamstrom on this side. This is the gas station, all the fueling positions, the fuel tank and everything is all out here along Central Avenue. There's no... so, this is the proposed convenience store. This is a commercial building, and this is another commercial building. So, there are two commercial buildings. So, the residential area is along the back down here. We do have this... again, this is currently... there is traffic and parking along the back here. This is now... would now become a detention pond area. So, this is... all of this area here is now added green space. We've also added an entire line of trees here, which is... exceeds any requirements in that from the zoning ordinance. This was just something to create more of a buffer to that residential area, as well as then with the addition of this... well, and again, I shouldn't say the addition, because there is already parking along back here. But this is just, right now, there's a chain-link fence. We have added along that whole chain-link fence area, an entire row of Arbevida, you know, natural screening, so that, again, this... the intent here would be to really... this... the addition of this project will actually create much more of a buffer than currently exists to that residential area. So, we did really want to try to kind of take the, you know, be considerate of those neighbors to make sure of that. So, there aren't any deliveries that would come back here. All of the site, everything is self-contained up here. And again, that current... the current, what is it? Beef Mart Building is down around in this area now, which will all become green space area. So, I just wanted to kind of point some of those things out. As far as, you know, fires or other things, of course, we do meet the, you know, the code requirements for fire separation and everything else. This building will be a... I can get to some pictures of the building and that, but full masonry building, masonry facade. And again, you know, from a fire, you know, code standpoint, there's separation from the buildings in any residential areas. And I should add as well, this site was previously a gas station, you know, prior as well. And so, you know, I believe there are some restrictive covenants in that on it to, you know, so it couldn't be residential anyways. So, it... so, again, I think from a use standpoint, it is, you know, appropriate for this area. So, again, I just wanted to quickly address those, those concerns. And again, I'm certainly sensitive to those and appreciate that those are legitimate concerns, but I do want to, you know, say that we've, you know, we do take pride in setting the standard, and all of our equipment is state-of-the-art equipment, and the building is very nice, bright, safe, and, you know, we want to be good neighbors and good part, you know, participants with the... with our surrounding property owners. So, certainly, I don't know what else to say there, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the commission?
Is there a car wash at this Luke's gas station?
No, there is not, no.
What are your open times?
You know, that is a good question. I think we would be, at this location, we would be 6:00 to 10:00, 6:00 AM, 10:00 PM. Not a 24-hour by any means, and not later than 10:00.
So, for your lighting, just thinking about the residents that live in that area, you know, are you going to have lighting that's going to be like way up in the air? It's going to extend into their, you know, homes, or not backyards? Or is it going to be something that's going to just cover that direct area?
Sure. I appreciate the fact that we can't see this here, but this is a photometric plan that was provided to staff and reviewed, and it does meet all the code requirements. And if I can try to kind of zoom... I don't know if I can zoom in on it. But there's a minimum... or a maximum requirement for the amount of foot candles or the... basically, the lighting that will overflow onto the adjacent properties. And so, through this process, we've ensured that there will not be that lighting overflow. Again, we have light... or, you know, landscaping plan for along, you know, essentially, this whole area back down in here to... from the residential area to create that additional buffer. So, all the lighting from actually the parking lot and from the... and from the fuel canopy and that will be, you know, largely screened by the, you know, by the convenience store. There are no doors or lights on the back of the building. So, again, there... yes, there are parking lot lights out here to make sure that it's a safe environment for the customers and for the public, but we have made sure that we don't, you know, exceed any of the, you know, allowed amounts to there. We also added some, rather than the large overhead lights, we have along for this parking area and for access to the building, rather than doing the large overhead lights, we have kind of the lower ballards, so that it has a safe amount of lighting for the pedestrians, but doesn't create a lot of overflow and a lot of spill to the adjacent properties.
Thank you.
Any questions? If not, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended plat for P-0324.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Cherry, could you call roll?
Brent Wright?
Yes.
Carissa Childers?
Yes.
Sam LaBoy?
Yes.
Deb Ekdahl?
Yes.
Denise Little?
Yes.
John Kremke?
Yes.
And with... as with the prior petitioner, under non-public hearing, under new business, we have the S-01-25 and SP-01-25.
So, similar to what was presented in the previous... from the previous petitioner, this would be the secondary plat, so it's essentially the, you know, the same plat. It'd just be the secondary for this project. So, we, again, would need to do the... have the recording of the release of easement for the sanitary easement and the recorded cross-access easement... or cross-access agreement with the adjacent property that would then be part of this plat, final plat.
You don't have any contingencies open?
No, other than, again, those two agreements being recorded as with the plat, so, to my knowledge.
Questions? If there's no questions, may I have a motion?
I will have a motion that we accept. That we accept the secondary plat approval for S-01-25 and the plant approval for SP-01-25.
Recording of the release and termination of easement for the sanitary easement.
With the contingencies as stated.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Mr. Cherry, could you call roll?
Brent Wright?
Yes.
Carissa Childers?
Yes.
Sam LaBoy?
Yes.
Deb Ekdahl?
Yes.
Denise Little?
Yes.
John Kremke?
Yes.
I believe that takes care of it. We... there was approval for both motions.
Both, but then I believe we have still the site plan also. Sorry. So, it'd be SP-01-25. Well, the S... the one is S-0125. That's the secondary plat.
One more.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Can you say them both at the same time?
Yes. Oh.
Both of those were read into... read into as approved.
Not unless you're unhappy with your motion.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other matters to come before the commission? If not, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Nope, no, we missed, we have one more here. We kind of skipped around a little bit. We, we bounced around a little bit. Under new business, not, not a public hearing, SP-03-25, NMLK, Indiana care of Steve Debold with Chester Inc., 555 East Port Center Drive, Valparaiso, Indiana, seeking site plan approval to construct a 5,160 square foot office at 905 Sun Drive, Port of Indiana.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Steve Debold, and this is Aaron Plou with NLMK. I'm with Chester Incorporated. We're here tonight with this project, which is located within the Port of Indiana at 905 Sun Drive. This property is leased from the Port of Indiana by NLMK and SMS Scrap Metal Services is active on the site with scrap metal recycling. As you can see by the aerial that's on the screen right now, this site is in a very heavy industrial type area. NLMK is directly, their building is directly west of this property across Sun, Sun Drive. But if you look at this property, it's, it's practically completely covered by existing deep layers of slag. It's all impervious surface, basically. You'll find scrap metal piles throughout the site because that's what it's being used for right now. What we're proposing with this development, let me get to the drainage plan so we can see this better. Let's see if I can zoom in here a little bit. So when you look at the, this property, the property, by the way, is 37 acres large. It's a very large piece of property, and we are proposing a 5,000 square foot building. The front area will be some office space, and the back area will be a shop area used to like pull in equipment that is used for scrap metal, to pull it into the back area to do light maintenance on the equipment. We have a small parking lot north of the building, and we have an infiltration, a proposed infiltration basin just west of the parking lot. The infiltration basin will be riprap lined. The soil's in this area very sandy. We did a percolation test, and we're right around 10 to 12 inches per hour, so we get rapid release of stormwater through the soils. But we're taking, we're building this building basically over impervious surface, so we're really not increasing the runoff in this area. But the port has asked us to take a portion of this project, which is the, the drives and the parking lot to the infiltration basin, along with part of the roof area of this proposed building, so that's what we're doing. If you look at the, the building, we're coming out on the south side of the building with our water and sanitary connections, and we are going to run them east to the other side of the, the parcel and make our connections in the George Nelson Drive right away. The water connection will be on the west side, and the sanitary connection will be on the east side. We'll be leaving the building on the south side, entering what will be a prefabricated grinder pump system. It'll enter that and be pumped all the way over to George Nelson Drive. But the force main and the water main, because of the different stockpiles and thing obstacles on, on the site, we are going to directional bore those, the water and sanitary directly to their destinations. Pretty straightforward project, and I'll answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Questions from the commission?
Steph would like to mention that the Port of Indiana has approved this as well as planning, fire department, and engineering, so there's no outstanding contingencies.
If there's no questions, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve site plan approval for SP-03-25.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Cherry, could you call roll?
Brent Wright.
Yes.
Carissa Childers.
Yes.
Sam La Boy.
Yes.
Deb Ekdahl.
Yes.
Denise Little.
Yes.
John Kremke.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
If no other business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.